Gracious Lord, we thank you for our friends, our visitors tonight, Lord. We pray that this county, Lord, will be lifted up tonight, or be enhanced by the decisions that we make. Well, we pray your guidance in our decisions and all things. And again, Lord, we thank you for this great nation, this great state, and this great county, and all those who live there. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
May we all stand blessed and blessed.
I am blessed and lead us to the life of the United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll call our Redwood meeting of the Board of Commissioners for March 21st, 2016, to order. We have no minutes to approve because this is our second meeting of the month, and we approved those on the first meeting. Are there any amendments or adjustments?
Yes, the cam and grant application that you did receive information from, but not the on-site, but you put on the agenda. However, there is under due business, item 15, out of committee grant application.
And the cam or land use...
Is not going to be considered.
But it wasn't on the on-site, was it?
No, you didn't receive information about it, however.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
To move, sir.
Okay, motion made in May, and filed on Saturday. All those in place, say aye. Aye, all votes. Thank you. And then, would you like some comments?
I just want to clarify, this is for public hearing, correct?
Yes, just a public comment at this time. Okay, not having any. A nice delegation that we do have.
I want to say something about the water. The water department, our procedure.
Okay.
Everybody over there?
Yes, and you need to state your name and address.
Okay.
Can you comment so that we have the ability to get a reply after?
All right, my name is Sheila Rooster, Level 20 Gregory Lane.
And how did you discover last name?
Apparently, I had a late bill, and I was maybe four days late. I come home, and there's no water, and I got off work. Called the water department, and I asked them about, you know, why I didn't put my water off. First of all, I wasn't even aware that it was four days late, because I was being pulled into my life classes, whatever. So, they told me that I called at about 4:15 at night, or leaving, and said it was too late for me to come back, because I'd back when I was paid cash. Had to pay cash, or whatever. Long story short, I didn't have the water that night, because I didn't get off home when I came to work until 6 o'clock at night. They said I had to bring a lady up to the home. We had no water at night, and no notification that it being turned off. So, I didn't want, I mean, I've got that straight, and everything's fine, but I just don't want this to happen to any one of us out here, even more come here and say anything. So, and I also brought another person that had an incident with the water department, and I found out at all. But, I'm getting my breath, I'm kind of upset. I think that the best thing that we could do if we can just amend something, or some procedure, where they can put something on our board, or set point five notice to take care of our business, give us a chance. I mean, we're talking four days late. And the reason I didn't qualify for, I was five days late in January, so they said I didn't qualify from them to go over a month or something like that, because I've already taken the previous month. So, I didn't even know about this water deposit, which has been in effect for years, so I didn't earn two years. I haven't been late in two years. It's the first I've been late in two years. And then she's like, well, this has been in place for two years. And I was like, okay, well, I didn't know about it either, but I would like to have some type of notification before they actually cut your water off, so we can be prepared. Because I had to come home from, you know, the baby there, and I thought, I mean, I was wrong. So, you want to talk, Teresa?
Yeah, I'm talking.
Well, you need to talk about when they, you are here, you need to give it in the box.
Yeah, I did have my baby.
You need to go out here and talk, like, I have to.
You need to state your name and address, please.
I'm Teresa Holter. It's F-U-L-C-H-E-R.
And Teresa?
Yes, T-H-E-R-E-S-A. And you need the address. Eight Cod Lane, and Corby. My payment was in the mail, and it was in the box.
Drop off.
Yes. And I, um, then my water didn't turn off until after 11 o'clock. And at nine, they said at 9:15 is when they put, they put my payment into the system. But they had plenty of time to notify whoever's turning the water off, to stop, don't turn it off, don't let it turn off anyway.
We did not receive any notification?
No.
Do you have your telephone number on your...
Yes.
Oh. Did you, um, the bill is due on 16th?
Yes.
Water was not cut off until 10 days later.
It was, it said the 26th is on, on the, the cutoff date.
10 days later.
Okay, it was in the, that was on Saturday, and it was in the box, on Saturday. And the water got turned off on Monday, on the 29th, I think it was.
Okay. Yes.
You know, we sit here, listening to both of you, and we're making notes, and, and we take it very seriously. You pay your taxes, pay your bills, and things like that, we want you to get the best service possible. But what we need to do going forward is need to ask our county manager to, to look at your individual situations.
Yes, I understand.
She has, do you want to respond now?
Boris, they'll both see bills, and I told them they were not satisfied, because they both had late payments, they both were made aware. One of them did not have a number on the redup call, but that's incorrect. And I told them, as I tell everyone, that they have an issue, and they're not satisfied, they need to go see the people.
And that's why we're here.
Right, you're right, man.
I just feel like we should have a notice, you know, within 24 hours of what they're going to do to give us, just in case, you know, something, then to have, someone had an ill life, and we weren't there to get it done. I mean, we're not talking 15, 20 days late, we're talking four, five, seven, what was the latest on mine? Um, I mean, we're talking weeks, two days maybe? And two of them being a weekend?
This one. Your water was cut off because your bill was late in January, and then it was paid after the cutoff date for the month of February.
Right, and it was three days late in January, after, after that, that's a 13-day delay. So, I mean, really didn't have a good, be a chance, because first of all, your cutoff notice is your bill. Well, honestly, I didn't see my bill, and call my dingy board, it's like, it can't work, or whatever. That's when I found it, and I'm like, okay. But that is your cutoff, that your bill is your cutoff bill, is what I was told, am I correct? Because it has your cutoff date on your bill.
And that's your cutoff, it has, it has the due date, and it has the cutoff date.
So, that would be your 10-day notice bill, your, stops being cut off, is what I was told.
And there's a redup call.
I just put my name on that, I did not know that, which would be also put in the back of our, those that bought my bill, to show you that don't have that information available, or, and that, my name would have been on it.
And you received your bill at the first of the month?
Yes, I am, I sure did. But it happened to be under a pile of other stuff, that it got underneath, so, on that particular incident, it happened.
Another thing, Jim.
Yes.
This is an issue that comes up periodically, and, you know, in my position, since we made a change, that we should consider what other counties are doing, and maybe a little bit more flexibility. I think this is another example where we ought to take another look at the policy, and see if we don't need to make some changes. I'm contacted periodically about the same situation. I had a similar situation myself, where my bill was due, and I attempted to mail it, my wife said, no, you can't mail it, because if you do, it will be late. And so, I came and put it in the box. The problem is, if you mail it, it goes to Pennsylvania, and so you don't have enough time before they get back to the county, and I'm being late. I truly believe that we need to take a look at the policy, and just see if we can provide a little bit more flexibility in what we have, because we have a pretty stringent policy right now. And I know we did it for a reason, trying to get, collect funds of a lot of delinquencies that we can't out there, but at the same time, we've explained a little bit too much, and some of our good things, so, that would be my suggestion, so let's take another look at it, and let's see if we can make some changes. If you would like to go.
It doesn't make a difference, it doesn't have to be six months from the last budget in order for it to be considered. And I'm not sure if this has been six months, it's five. And we can, we can research that part, so. Okay, Ms. Henderson, would you like to say something?
No, we'll be back to the new policy. We just implement the policy as the board has asked.
Thank you for coming, Boris, or Tom. Appreciate your...
Thank you. Who did that on the agenda?
When the six months is up.
Okay, thank you. But this deal, their bill in 16, there is a 10-day grace period.
And I totally understand that, and I...
And just you, and that bill comes out of first of the month.
Absolutely.
So, you had 10 days property bill before, you had 10 days afterwards.
Right.
So, that's really a one-on-one.
Plus, I had, I changed it then, also, to not 10-day period, my water bill, but not on my list. So, I mean, that was just one of the incidents that happened. And there was no flexibility, I was like, what? I couldn't believe it.
Well, we'd have some flexibility if everybody did this, you know, you hadn't had a delinquency in 12 months.
Right. I figured delinquency, but delinquency would be probably 30 days or more, if not in this case, 10 days.
Well, if you had a delinquency in the last 12 months.
Yeah.
If you had, if you would not, you would have just been added to your field, for the first time. Because we all have the business space, we're, we're just aside, so we are in that way.
I just figured, delinquents, delinquency would be, delinquency to me is 30 days or more, not like 10.
Well...
And, and, of course, the heart doesn't learn, and I had it set up different, now we'd get paid, but it was the whole point, like, it was me, and I, it was I had a delinquency, and I don't know what, you know, register was, but what about...
Well, we also have in place, if you, if there's someone who's elderly, that has someone else's name on, I mean, number on the bill, so they can get a call if they...
Yes, Ms. Henderson, she helped put my name on the list, I did not, so no anything about the redup call, that I can't...
Well, I mean, like, if you have a capable parent, and they can give, put the child's name on it, so they can know if I, if mom or dad didn't pay the bill.
Okay.
For the 10 days.
Yeah, and that's what she had, she had told me that this long, so.
Okay. Okay, we do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, no administrative periods at this time, we do have a public hearing on extension of the solar moratorium. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
To move, sir.
A motion has been made, and second, all those in place, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this time, we're going to the public hearing, I buy the notes for the hearing of the moratorium for another 60 days. Okay, Ms. Baptiste is our plan.
At the last time Commissioner, we, in, at the beginning of this mor, month in March, the board requested that an ad be placed in the newspaper for continuation of the existence of ordinance moratorium, so that you guys can further consider the item. This is the write-up on the moratorium for, for you to review. The ad, the first page is the ad that was placed in the newspaper, the second portion is the actual ordinance moratorium itself. As you note, in the second section of the moratorium, it does stay for a 60-day time period, as requested.
Okay. Now, if you have a group, I mean...
Yeah, you just have to comment.
Okay, anyone who has comments, if it comes to the project, state your name, and we're going to have a permanent time limit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Kenny DeBola, we're at 898 Lexington Drive, Ringel. I just want to say a couple things briefly, please. We have built some solar systems in this county, and happy to have worked here. We primarily build solar systems for Duke Energy and Dominion Power. We have two systems that we filed interconnection applications for here in this county, and obviously unable to start up work. We would like to, if possible, have some input, potentially, into the design of solar ordinance. We, my company is called Sun Energy One, and we have pretty much started utility scale solar in eastern North Carolina in 2010, 11, and we've helped many counties design ordinance and craft it to suit their needs. Over 54 counties in North Carolina now have solar ordinance, and some of the ones I can name to you, for you here briefly, are in, are in the east, we've built in, built systems in all of these counties, Edgecombe, Over, Quay, Carritytuck, North Hampton, Camden, Pascatank, Cowan, Washington, Pitt, Martin. So, there's lots of counties that have ordinances, and we certainly support the idea. We have not heard anything in six months on the progress, and respect your ability to sort of craft that your way, but we would like to offer our services to help. And in addition, just to point out that the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association, jointly with the North Carolina Solar Center, have designed a model in these four counties that is pretty much very similar to what's been adopted, and generally receive several changes, and happy to oblige, and happy to, to sit down and discuss, you know, any specific requirements this county may have. Just to mention briefly, the two systems that we have federally connection for, similar in size to one that we just completed in Edgecombe, approximately 1,000 acres, and their value is somewhere between 150 and 200 million, even with the current property tax abatement that the state has imposed, you know, you're looking at 30 to 40 million dollar tax base to the county, or no drain on services whatsoever, these are unmanned facilities, and don't require any services. In addition to that, I would encourage you to speak to the people of Edgecombe County, that project required 1,000 jobs for over 12 months, and a small percentage of jobs permanently, just in the grounds and the maintenance of the facility and the upkeep. So, a large percentage of that money will spend in Edgecombe County, to build that facility, and a large percentage of the labor in that county and surrounding counties. We, we are not opposed to continuing the moratorium, but we hope that we might be able to help assist in some way.
Well, thank you for coming. I think that we have consulted with the solar groups from the state, and what their model ordinance, and we have also used the ones in the surrounding counties as well, as well, almost finished.
Well, I appreciate your time, thank you very much for...
I think it was a good understanding, and you're saying that you have to commit in any order, is it?
So, these...
Which one is that?
So, there's two systems here, one in Hobsville, one in Hazlet. One in Hobsville is on, on hold at the moment, the one in Hazlet is not. They're both the same size, they're either megawatts, and those in connect applications are filed with PJM in Pennsylvania, so they're the transmission line operator for most of the east coast, and we've received our interconnection application for those.
What size parcels?
I'm sorry?
What size parcels are they?
They're generally heavy megawatts, is built on somewhere between 700 and 800 acres.
But you do not have applications on file with us, because we cannot accept it, the applications during the moratorium?
Correct, we cannot.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
One question. On the Edgecombe scenario?
Yep.
You're telling me that they're going to make a 30, 30 million dollar tax basis for Edgecombe County?
Yes, so that system, we built that system, we developed and built that system with Duke Energy. I'm not allowed to tell you what the cost was, but it was in between 150 and 200, so with the 80% property tax abatement, the tax base will still be somewhere between 30 and 40 million dollars to the county, and I would encourage you to speak to them, we have a great relationship with all those counties I mentioned. There was a large amount of contract amount that was spent in Edgecombe County, building restaurants, building hotels, building supplies, over 400 pieces of heavy equipment for needed servicing, lots of need for farming assistance, we had to change the shape of the ditches to suit the North Carolina department of environment, so there's a lot of farming need, a lot of stone, fencing needs, and generally, to be honest, mostly just labor, because there's a huge, we have a small group of labor that travels from Ringel, our company's based in Little Town, Fort Belk, we have a small group of labor that travels, but generally all labor in the county, from the county to the surrounding county, and it made a huge impact to Edgecombe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, for the... Anyone else? Okay, here, no, do I have a motion to come out of public hearing?
To move, sir.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in place, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is the end of the public hearing, so we'll move on to the whole business. Okay, we'll top the vote, on the moratorium.
I'd like to ask Kenny to come back and tell you, excuse me, I've got a minute.
I've already got my three minutes.
Yeah, you can just...
Any of the HJ, BUL, companies, Sun Energy One.
We're getting ready to vote, so we need discussion on that. As Ms. Hopler stated, we're nearing the end of having hours, just like, just like we wanted, but we do need a little bit more time. Okay, so that's why we're being, and I'm talking about six months, we're talking about 60 days.
Sixty days.
60 days, okay. So, if, if you have application regardless of size of parcel, 60 acres, 8 acres, or whatever, your start date would be what?
We traditionally like to build in some months if we can, and avoid October, November, December. So, 60 days is okay for us, 30 days would be better, but really, we just came here tonight to ask if there's a chance that we could assist in any way, and more importantly, just talk through the project. I mean, these are some of the largest solar systems in the country, and they're the transmission line, distribution, and there's a tremendous benefit to this county, and we've seen that, and we'd encourage you to speak to other counties, that's really why we're here. We totally respect the 60 days, generally, an ordinance is three to four pages, so I don't know that you need that long, but it's up to you.
Are you, some of you may not be, literally, I'm not asking for names, but are you in negotiation with two, three, four, five landowners in Gates County?
On the Hazlet parcel, which is going ahead, there's several landowners that are under option, we're not currently negotiating with any of those, so we have the right to exercise those options.
But you do have some, of real priorities?
Oh, yes, all the options, all the land options assigned on both projects, the problem is with the Hobsville parcel, there's 3,000 acres under option, a lot of it from stonewall?
No.
In Hobsville, yes, stonewall, and it's a lot of wetlands. So, that particular project that was on hold, that Hazlet project, is good to go.
Are you able to comment on one of River Road in Harper County, where you were going to build on one side of the road?
Yes.
And you ran into issues with...
Yes, I would love to comment on that, okay. It was a horrible experience for me. So, we purchased the land from FIA Timber Company, with the help of a gentleman called Mike Neil. We, we had in our contract that FIA warned to us that it was not wetlands, we closed $280,000, and we were told it was 100% wetlands. So, it was a learning experience, and we were lucky enough to be able to purchase the property across the road and build the system. That system is, is pretty good.
On the wetland side, are there a couple acres?
About eighty.
Okay, and then when you went across the road, that short of eighty?
About 60 maybe.
I could buy it as well.
Right. I'd like to say one more thing, I'm sure a few people know that this is a little bit of side information that I found interesting, we built a system here that we call Sugar Run. What's the name of that street?
Sugar Run.
Sugar Run. Of course, of course. That was purchased by the 2016 Daytona 500 winner, Danny Hamer, and I thought that was interesting news for you, and he would like to come visit you people, and he spends quite a bit of time there, so it's interesting to have a celebrity in NASCAR, I think it's interesting, purchase here.
If you don't look for a side of the money, NASCAR may... Or you might be called with names.
Now, we've basically gone over our solar ordinance, and we'll look at it from like, I don't see a problem with, you all have a comment, other take a look at it, and if you want to submit some comments to the plan directly, I think that would be appropriate. We're going to look at it again, probably in our, at the April meeting, or, it may have to be by April, maybe not, maybe it may be, probably, more than likely, but you have a problem with Mr. Bola taking a look at what we've done so far? Just for comments, I mean, obviously, they, you know, we have the last say, but certainly, there may be some, some points that we have to consider, that might be plus. I will say one thing about the Sugar Run, I would have liked to have seen defense a little bit fall back, and shrubbery, evergreen plant between the fence and the houses and the road.
All, all of that, I can, I can promise you is in process, and I know, because I've signed the order, and...
But the vegetation's like, I, it's not bad, being on the cropping line.
Okay, I don't know about that, but I'll look into that, but I know the vegetation buffer is going in in April.
It's going to be on the outside of it, or the inside?
I've just read through whatever was in the permit.
Outside.
Yeah, whatever was in the permit was approved, and it was due going in March, and there was some rains, and it was settled in April. But I think you'll be happy when it's done, and if you're not, we're happy to continue to improve. If you're ready, you can record.
Yeah, I was going to say, you're on that.
You can record it, we will improve it if you're not happy.
Board, I made a, just made a comment and suggestion about allowing Sun Energy to take a look at what we've done so far, and I, I think we, we would need some type of consistent interactions on, on allowing that, if the board agrees with that. I'd like to hear, you know, the board members, board of directors. I'd like to hear, you know, the board members, uh, board adjutants.
This is a nice note from me. And we discussed the document in a open meeting. If we were to allow them to see it, I mean, I would be opposed to that once, once it's been addressed with the items that we suggested tonight. Because there are some changes that is fluid. And I, I would have no objection to that once we made those corrections. The, the things we discussed. So that, that would be my opinion on that. More information in person.
You would have to, during the public hearing, anyone can offer comments on it. Because it would have to be a comment, I mean, a public hearing, you have to pass it, uh, updated, so the ordinance. But there will be a chance.
Right, it would give them a, a chance to revise the input, so that we can consider it, I'll make uh, next meeting, our next review of the implementations that's just been made tonight. You know, I, I would be interested in, you know, what, what you all's take would be on, and some of the things that we're proposing, not with Kenny.
We have, well, we drafted most of the ordinances in the state.
Well, that bothers me.
Well, but we, we.
How's that's like the box to make the rules for.
We, we give that an injunction to the counties. The counties then went to our independent experts and engineers to evaluate that. When I say drafted, a lot of what we, the input that we added was more to do with technology. So for example, some counties had an ordinance that mentioned solar technology that's no longer in use. That made the ordinance longer and it made it more complicated. They had high prescriptions that don't apply to a particular type of solar that's used today. So we're not really in the business of telling you what you need to do to protect your citizens, more so from a technical standpoint. What's applicable and, and, and just sharing information from around the state. Uh, you know, but we're happy to stay out of it also. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, do, I will enter in a motion concerning this moratorium.
Now, Chairman, I move that we accept the moratorium as presented before us and print here tonight, uh, for sixty days. I'll make that a motion in just a moment, but, uh, that is what I believe we should do to give our planning board and our county manager the opportunity to pursue the comments that we had, the changes. And I think of about maybe six, so I'm very, none of them were made at that point. Um, but I would encourage our, uh, our planner to take in advisement of the things she heard here tonight from the president, as well as looking into a tax base between thirty and forty million dollars. I want to know that's Edge County County, I want to know the details on that, and they'll be glad to give that to you with the data.
Okay, but that's not, we need.
My motion, my motion is to accept the, uh, uh, the document before us, which shows a sixty day moratorium on solar farms, so.
Okay, motion's been made, second, and discussion?
Just, just, Jennifer, what is our, when does the original six month end? When, when does the sixty day start?
It started on September twenty eighth, or September, it started in September, I think it was the point first, the number nineteen, September.
I think according to the document, Billy, if I can, if in front of us, it's got an adoption date of the day.
That's, that's really extended, not the original.
Yeah, that's not the original.
Is it what's filed today, I believe?
Yeah, yeah, it's, thanks.
So that would be sixty days from today. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I, I would like to, uh, make a motion, uh.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor standing in the moratorium for sixty days, um, raise your hand. Okay. The motion passes five to zero. Okay, um.
I would, I would like to, uh, put motion forward for it to, um, direct county manager to provide, uh, some information for Boland with a copy of our, uh, draft, uh, sole ordinance, uh, for their review and input, uh, not to hold up, moving forward, just with affirmation and input of, of their desire.
Motion has been made, I hear a second. Hearing none, but motion fails for lack of second. Okay, moving on to, uh, Roman numeral seven, whole business, um. Excuse me, my numbers are all.
There is an exception, but he was about.
Oh, yeah. I apologize, Melissa. Okay, a letter requesting combination of eighty six, eighty percent tax, sole tax credit, um, straw forest, work of fame, and sending letter requesting, uh, about tax credits. Currently, the state gives eighty percent tax credit to the energy companies, and we would like to see that done away with since the state has removed their, uh, tax credits for their thirty five percent. Um, so that is, and you had a sample letter in your packet. At the front. And please note, this is a draft letter, so. For every decision made. Right, what format is opening paragraph? And what you need to note, if you wish for everyone to sign it, or Chair Hopper. The first letter uses the words "we" throughout. So that, I'll get some of the other languages in the letters.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes.
County manager, do you have, any discussion between you and other county managers as to what other counties or what the comments are?
The meeting that we had, uh, discussed, discussed last time, we were just asked at the thing about the groups, probably was the six counties in the northeast, and then it was also mentioned at the Iowa Law Commission City and County Managers Meeting for people to do this. Everyone had to take it back, I'm not following up, to see who has done this letter. Um, but several counties did indicate that they were in agreement that this needed to be repealed. So that we could charge company gift of tax money. And then I'll move to the broad of the Iowa Law Commission. Everly, we had discussed it at Iowa Law Commission, um, informally. So several counties announced areas.
Sort of a catch point to the way we want to repeal the tax credits, so that we can collect more money. Tax credits still, uh, they're sent from the bill, doesn't it?
Well, tax credit's already gone away, the state ended in December. They seem to be still anxious to be used. What is.
I have a paper, send it to the letter. Senator Cook and, uh, represent.
Send it.
Big one. Honk, honk.
Honk.
I need to, to sign all the conditions to have more effect, rather than just, uh, single seat. Make the motion. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, submit the letter to our legislators in the General Assembly, uh, with all commissioners here.
So. Motion's been made, I'll put it second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so, and then a draft of the letter. Tomorrow, there is a meeting at, um, Museum of Iowa Law with, uh, some of the elected officials, so I, I plan on going, and so I'll, I, I, all the counties.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
I took a look at it, but I'm not sure my schedule is going out of there.
Um, sole ordinance, we are going to.
Yeah, you still need to discuss.
Okay, sole ordinance that we have been working on, planning board, we would like to, um, commend the planning board for their due diligence. They have worked very hard for the last, um, six months on this, and so, um, we will kind of take that into consideration. Do you have any changes?
I would agree that you just make the general, you know, you want to check to see what you're recommending.
Okay, um, I want to, a couple of my just grammar things. Um, but one of the changes was concerning the bond of a lot of credit. And we wanted to make sure that that was made, I, to, um, the county of Gates or, you know, escrow county or something, that we want to check on how to handle that, as well as what happens if there's a transfer of ownership. If a company comes in and five years later sells it to someone else, we want to make sure these rules apply. So we need to add something about the transfer of ownership, or in case if the company.
If any county said.
Yeah, yes. Uh, so that was, I think, probably the biggest change. Uh, so it was due to the, uh, fencing. Uh, we want to make sure that the fencing was, uh, around the entire area, but that the vegetation was on the outside of the fence between the two fence and solar panels were planted, and the vegetation is in front of, in front of the fence. So it can't block it. Could just make that clear. There were two major changes, I believe, that we discussed. And they are related into about the transfer of ownership and how you handle that lot of credit for the escrow. To make sure we can do it legally correct. Is anybody want to add? Uh, so we will hear about the sole ordinance again next month, with the changes. Okay, moving on to the planning board. Um, once again, the planning board, what?
Does it have to make a motion?
We can just be carried out. Okay, the planning board, the, we had, um. The planning board is working to, to let on this as well, and we commend them for their efforts, um, to try to clear, clear rules about membership, procedures, meetings, the notification of meetings, hours, voting, um, et cetera, that the planning board is in charge of. Do I hear any, does anyone want to say anything?
I'm sure it wasn't progress. I don't think it is.
Changes? Ms. Baptiste, would you like to come forward and go with changes per equivalent? For our previous rules?
I think the, one of the, from what I have, the, really though, we didn't really get all of, well, we didn't go all the way through the planning board, I, I apologize. Um, the only thing that was really added from previous meetings was under G, um, number one, regular meeting, regular meetings of the planning board shall be held on the third Tuesday each month. Unless special notice is given, meetings will begin at three P M in the Gate County Courthouse, adding on in the Gate County Courthouse today. I think that was the main thing that we, we ran over today that was different from previous meetings.
Do I hear a motion to make this a, um, a public hearing with DL next month?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
Sure. Okay, motion's been made, second, to hold a public hearing, um, with changes to our, um, planning board. To board, I mean, planning board, tech amendments. Are you, I'll tie it to the hour.
Date and time be determined.
Okay, the date and time be determined by the plan. But I would say that would be made. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we'll get that, skip our public hearing for that. Okay, the board of adjustments. They were very similar changes in the board of adjustment.
Yes, ma'am.
To the, um, planning board, you would like to state those.
Again, it's regular meeting, under G meeting, regular meetings, regular meetings of the board of adjustment shall be held on the third Tuesday each month, unless special notice is given, meetings will begin at one P M in the Gate County Courthouse. And then under section eight, no, section H, notice of meetings, number five, um, Mr. Felton, um, Mr. Felton requested that, um, the change be made that an advertisement for a public hearing shall, instead of may, be placed in a newspaper of general circulation in a county that will underline the hearing of the case, if all conditions stated above are not met. And that was, that was one of the, other than the, the changes that were dictated by general statute, which are highlighted.
Correct. And we added the general statutes.
Yes, ma'am.
To that.
Chairman, do you need a motion?
I'd start with it.
Chairman, we accept the, uh, text amendments to the board of adjustments, uh, document before us now.
Do I hear a second?
Sure.
Okay. Did Ray say a second? I think he's.
He didn't try to, he didn't want to.
Um, a motion's been made, it's probably second, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, next, I invite you to pull that off, to the, to the main public hearing. Yes. Um, the next order of business on the old is a merger management discussion. Can close in your documents, in your packet, answer to some questions that have been asked of Karen Longing um, back in February, and I did receive a response, and I'll forward it and show you. There are a few other questions that I have still not handled.
There are a few other questions that I have still not been able to get a response to from anyone else in the government. Two questions to Carol specifically at the beginning of your packet specifically refers to the tire fees and how they are calculated. I just want to make you aware of that, that these do not have to do with anyone else. They are just the tire fees. The document we have is the number of counties that have EMS special districts. I was asked about special taxing districts and this is from the Department of Revenue. And I did make a note that Carroll County, while it was listed, as of January, did not have a special taxing district, but on the first Tuesday of this month, they did vote and they did create a special district for EMS and David Clay, the county manager, told me that they would implement whatever fees were requested by the Department of Fire Department. And they would apply the same fees to EMS. You'll know that some of these counties that are listed have things listed as rescue service districts, some of them have listed EMS and some have a combination fire slash rescue or EMS district. And when I asked, I sent out a message to find out how they determine the fees, unfortunately, I wasn't able to get any feedback.
What is the matter now having a special district? Is it population?
Maybe hidden commercial or something.
Yeah.
Don't have that system.
Right, that's what Carroll did. They made an entire district. Then it is not a tax and it does not have to go to our government. It's going to be a public hearing held and then the county can make the decision on if there's a special district to be created for the EMS and then the commissioner votes to create that district and then point that fee.
So it demonstrates clearly that the county line, it needs another quality.
Right, in one of the previous emails, it references all three statutes. I don't know what the difference is.
I think it's number one, but it's two, see if they were second.
But the process is basically they didn't have a public hearing and once the public hearing is passed, emissions, they do put on, implement the fee. And we also have to determine how to apply to each land on their, on their platform. So it's basically cut drives. It's going out, we would not need to, we would not need to put on ballot, vote on it. I found it interesting that the fire ordinance references, if you have general statute, one due to page eighty, that's two thirty-six point one. It might have existed back in two thousand, but it doesn't exist now. There's no two thousand, two thirty-six point one, because of that fact, that's all about retirement of fire. I took mine and I didn't go on that on that general statute. No, it's honoring deceased or retired by fire, page two thirty-six point one. So I don't know what they used back in two thousand when they implemented this, but that general statute, it won't tell on what exists. So, you know, at this point, I think that if we were to determine how, what the assessment would be for the number of parcels that we have in the county would be the next step. Whereas if we were trying to raise three hundred thousand dollars, exactly twenty dollars per parcel official, I think that would be the next step, of course.
There's been flat rate in here, it was all flat percentages of cents per hundred, so we've been flat paid. Well, also they, or shall I say discuss, about people renting from the county that don't own property, don't own land and that, you know, what was the best, what was the best way to address those scenarios? Was it, do you have anything, did you run anything, put a vis or anybody else about how it might be doing that or is it just all of the landlord's revenue?
I think that is basically, like I said, I did not get a lot of response back, but someone used this and it's billed to the river office, gets the tax bill. And then, of course, it's up to the tax for the landlord or someone that's in a rental house to pass that one, that person if they so choose.
For the, for the public, I would like to state this, you know, this is something new for us, but in this document, I want you to know that at the beach, they have a, they charge for putting sand back, like we're talking about doing, we have one for fire and then we have one for a rescue squad, but just about, I would say all, for the beach counties, whatever district is on the waterfront, they have a fee for reclamation sand. So just, I'll tell you about that.
We'll continue to investigate, see what we can, our found information and I'll take any actions.
How about our refreshment we have, if you can, a contract for EMS where we're taking a little bit more time really.
That's one of the questions that I have yet to receive an answer from, that I keep desperately about.
Okay, right. Well, it's obvious that we all feel like we need to supply funds to the rescue squad. So if I could just look at you guys as I say that and you all nod, we don't tend to be concerned. It's just a matter of getting everything in place to move forward.
Well, I think you kind of managed to bring back to us how this team would be appropriate. Numbers, if we got four thousand parcels in the county, we need the information board back to us, that has to be twenty-five dollars per parcel a year or it would be three cents or a half a cent additional tax on landlords to cover the fee for hundred, for hundred. We need to know how it's, how it's going to be appropriate, how it's going to be assessed, how it's going to be looking down.
But if I may, in order to determine that, you'll have to decide if you're willing to fund the full request or partial request as well.
How do we take that up when we're looking at the budget? I mean, so it's still a lot of unanswered questions.
But I can, but I do have that note and I know there's over seven thousand, there's like seven thousand some parcels, I can't remember the exact number, but we had to put them in before we vouch. There's over seven thousand parcels.
But of course, some parcels are five acres and some are high in acres.
Seven thousand parcels.
Over.
We're going to have to find out some way to work population issue with parcels too. As far as these residents or a commercial building that's paying the fee, on this, we cannot, there's going to be a lot of work involved, but we cannot put the same fee on a one-person ISO that we put on a six- or patient nurse. And we also talked about possibility of, for some landowners have a cap. And just looking in here, and I know, you know, these are different counties, but just to state a few things, one, one district is two cent, here's one that's four and a half cent, there's one that's three cent, all of these are per hundred. So there's, that's not too much of a range for them.
That sum is one and a half.
It's five and a half.
And it's, it's in the old.
Yeah, I, I guess, after what this, our chief, EMS chief, we have fire ordinance in place since two thousand and the assessment has been X number of dollars, I've got it somewhere, but it's been X number of dollars for fifteen years. The assessment is forty dollars annually for single family value, valued at fifty thousand dollars for a single family value out of the fair market, value equal to or greater than fifty thousand, fifty dollars a year. But the point is, is that for sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years, they have operated on this application. And I commend fire department for having done that, having come back to the board saying, hey, you know, I, I need a little bit more money, but somehow they've managed to, to operate on this without X number increase over X number of years. And, you know, moving forward this, this is something that's going to help you get where you need to be, but it's still would not minimize trying to operate as you have in the past, as, as on a volunteer basis, bringing in funds wherever possible to try to keep this amount that the citizens of the county is putting into this at a minimum. Follow what I'm saying? So it's going to take vigilance in order to do that. Because, you know, once we pass this, it's going to be in place, but in your, five years down the road now, it's going to still be the same. You know, it's not something that you, you budget each year and it increases, so I just want to put that out there and make everybody aware of what's been done in the past and what potential are in the future. I will commend the EMS, having operated since nineteen sixty-six without having to have the financial background of the corporations that we give it, but it's going to take some vigilance in, in order to continue to operate within what's being announced.
Okay, so we need to, kind of, we need to find some information, different information that I've heard for us, where we have certain items and parcels, we need to consider acreage on certain population. And I don't know how we're going to make all this determination, but I'm sure you'll come up with information for us to back us. What is the most ethical, what is the most important thing? Okay, so we will, we've got some major decisions coming up, a whole idea of those. Our last item of the whole business is from the board of education. Petition for election funds to replace central middle school is in your packet, two-page. And they're asking for, for us to do a referendum and the, you know, number of questions. Okay, if you, the key points on the second page, nine decade rule, so it's a chapter one on the IC and one on general statutes, the Gates County Board of Education does hereby submit this petition and does hereby request that the Gates County Board Commissioners call an election for voters to vote on whether there should be levied a special tax to overturn this law. Now, this is from the board of education, this is not from us, this is what they have proposed. One, the purpose of said special tax shall be to replace central middle school. Two, the area in which the election is requested is Gates County. Three, the maximum rate of taxes which is proposed to be added is fifty cents on one hundred dollar valuation of property subject to taxation in Gates County. The other side does hereby certify that the Gates County Board of Education has authorized the following petition on behalf of the Gates County Board of Education.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is basically a petition that, that we asked for. They're not saying the rate, the tax increase. This is by general statute, which is the maximum rate of which is proposed to be added is fifty cents on a one hundred dollar valued product. That's not, that's not what we're going to add.
I know, I did, I did. Yeah, I know that's not what we want to add, but they've asked for the maximum, but not going to get the maximum. I don't thank anybody on here, well.
Well, the proper, they have done what we've asked them to do, what they need to do. Our move is to issue a resolution for the general statute, call for a referendum, item to be added to the twenty sixteen general election ballot in the form of a question. And we have the election director here, who gives more information on that if we need to. The question would be for local tax or against local tax? The question would be Shall County be levying supplemental tax on all taxable property in the amount not to exceed what it's going to take? And we need to kind of manage the tax administrator to figure out what it would take to raise, I believe you're asking sixteen to twenty million dollars.
They asked for sixteen to twenty, they would not, never, when I requested, did they give us the number? This is what, for about sixteen to twenty million.
Right, for sixteen to twenty. Well, we could, we would figure out what that would be spread over, how many years? Twenty to thirty years, loan and what amount tax would be, that, you know, coming somewhere in the neighborhood, maybe ten to thirteen cents. So the resolution would read, in the amount not to exceed the calculated cents for one hundred dollars in valuable property to finance the construction of a new central middle school and demolition of the existing school structure for students, faculty of Gates County Public Schools. And that resolution would go through the election office director and put it on the ballot. So at this time, we would be a resolution, but in order to put the resolution forth, we need to know how much tax dollars or cents will actually be in order to, to cover the sixteen to twenty million dollars.
I mean, yes, but we have to be upfront with the voters. We have to tell them what their impact will be. We can't just be generic, we want to have to tell them what they want to do. I see our fourth election, how much leeway do you have to get something, to get ballots printed for a referendum?
Seven five days.
Okay, I apologize, I didn't know if you could tell. So seven five days from November, the election is November eighth.
And we may not, we may not be able to answer all these questions, but when, if the referendum is approved... when, if this referendum is approved and it goes on the ballot, there can't be, there can't be that variation. It's gotta be, oh, how could fund, is it, is it gonna be a dollar? It could be that we'll spend it off, but say, for example, um, that we agreed and firmly agreed and have been told by all the experts that it's gonna take sixteen, it says it's gonna take sixteen million. Um, we would, do you believe that it would be on the ballot? It would be sixteen million? I mean, there's not gonna be any range.
Right, no, there would not be a range. That is my question.
On the most critical, you see the part there on the most critical need, I don't agree with all of that.
Oh.
Yeah, some of those things, I don't, I don't agree with it. Um, talking about the baseball field and the football field, I don't agree with that dollar amount. And I don't necessarily agree with the building, where it's gonna be. So that's something in order to need to, um, we've got a little ways to go for me to feel good about, uh, that part. And I know that's just sort of like everyone, but I don't want to, I mean, also it was sixteen million and we all agree to that, to try and let it move forward, to get on the ballot. My agreement to that, I don't intend to find me to this where I say here.
Well, I think we'd have, we definitely have the more information what it would cover.
Right.
Not in which way.
Oh, yeah, what, what is our alternative? I mean, we've got a situation that's been presented to us where, you know, based on all the information that they've gathered, is that it's imminent that they need a new school based on, uh, the condition of the school, the environment, health conditions and so forth. So, you know, it's, it's pretty much given that the citizens of the county need to decide, you know, there are ones who have children in the school system, uh, there are ones that have comments on it, and I think, you know, and moving forward, it gives the citizen an opportunity to express what they think. It's not a guarantee that it will actually, not a guarantee that it will not. I'm sure that, uh, superintendent and all the school board is gonna try to advocate as much as possible for the parents and citizens of the county to vote for. But, uh, it's gonna be the citizen's choice. I think that's where it should be.
Well, I, I agree with that. I think that we need to ask the Board of Education what their vision is because Central is not the only school that has problems. Our, our buildings are aging and, you know, we don't have the funds to deal, like, you know, on some of those, Butler really has some, a, a older part of the building than Central does. Uh, some of our campuses at present time are not at capacity, um, by the street of population. Do you have, they considered, you know, what they're, I mean, is, is, what, I mean, are we considering looking at how they can pass cost-effective means, like maybe merging? I mean, they need to, there's some things that need to be looked at, not just with Central, but with all, all schools in the county that have some needs, um, that are, I mean, critical to those schools.
And I think we, we've articulated that to the Board of Education, to superintendent Williams. And, uh, you know, we haven't gotten anything so far. But the county's in a position right now where, uh, we didn't make aware of what's going on out there. And I don't think we wanna put ourselves in a position where, uh, you know, we're not doing due diligence in order to address the situation, which could, could be very costly. If it's not addressed, uh, I would just encourage you not to delay requesting these things. So let's try to shoot for getting on the ballot by November. I think it got until July. It was seventy-five days, it probably be the end of July, August, you have it to August, but at that, at that time, uh...
Information has been provided, it came with the posted information. So I can send that to you ahead of time, separate from all of the other department requests. I can send you what the school has submitted, further budget they submitted. The critical need page that you have, that's actually just the top half of, and it's, I don't know if it's a section, but a two or three page document that talks about the critical needs of the schools. So I should share some of that with the top of today on the phone. So I can go ahead and send you that. And then there was a facilities report that they completed that we had to sign, and I made copy and I can give that to you as well. So I can scan all of that, submit all of that to you, so you can see the other issues. Because in the facilities report, it does talk about the number of students at each of the schools and what the capacity of the school.
And I, I, our group, Central has a critical need, but I think we need to be holistic, um, and not just, I mean, we need to make sure that we're spending on that as vastly as we can.
Well, um, on seventy-five days, let's be clear about seventy-five days. Does it have to be approved by the state, seventy-five, seventy-five days prior to the election or just a submission within seventy-five days?
We have to develop a resolution.
Submit.
We'll, we'll make a resolution.
I sent it to you in the words, send it to the election office.
They'll, then the state can approve it. So our only task is to develop a resolution, county manager, develop a resolution for us and either approve it or, I guess, with the assistance of the director, for the word to be correct.
We got, we got exactly what you said, that's why she made the resolution. That's what we're looking at.
Right, and, and what I read would be on, is, is what is, has been put on the resolution for other counties. So, right, it's basically, it's a question, the resolution is in the form of a question, it goes to the Board of Elections. And must it approve from state, it goes on that.
It's kinda, we had the bond issue on the election, you know, and it was yes or no.
Exactly.
And it's kinda same temple. So we have that.
Well, I'm all in favor of the public voice in their opinion. I'm in favor of the public that it's being on the ballot. And I'm, I'm ready tonight to move in that direction, as long as it, as long as we agree that I'm not bound by what I see over there, the dollar amount and what they'll do, what they can do with it. You know, but that has to be refined, revised, discussed.
The county manager has to figure that out, what it's gonna be, what...
I'm cool with all the numbers they have, which is sixteen, twenty million. So I don't know if you want me to go back to the school board and tell me which number to use or if you're going to decide at some point which number to use.
Well...
Otherwise, I would come back with all different tax rates.
Well, do we, are we having to agree? I guess the question, uh, we asked the question, can we? Can we agree to move forward with the, uh, referendum on the ballot? Agreed to put the referendum on the ballot? Can we vote and agree on that tonight with these other things to follow?
And that, cause I do think we need to have a discussion with the Board of Education or take a look at what their budget is, and, um, we need to have some back tuning.
I, I would prefer also the county manager to determine what the cents are that will be, that will take, sixteen million dollars.
Okay, how about one will take seventeen, one will take eighteen, and...
So the, is that what you were leading the battle with?
Yeah. Sixteen million, seventeen million, eighteen million, fifteen million, whatever. They're covering the, the range of what they're asking.
And then we can get the school board, we can try to nail it down as to whether or not it's gonna be seventeen million, eighteen million, or nineteen.
Or sixteen million.
Or sixteen.
Or fifteen million.
Or fifteen five. Okay, the, then, does anyone like to make, anyone make a motion?
Uh, Board Chairman, I'll make a motion that the, uh, the golf, a resolution to be submitted to the Board of Elections, uh, that poses the question for the citizens on the ballot, uh, whether or not they're in favor of, or not in favor of, uh, a tax increase to be determined. For building a new Central Middle School. And demolition, demolition of it.
The tax will be determined prior to...
It will be determined prior to.
So that the people will know exactly what their voting, uh, they're costing them. Okay, your first motion, um, that Commissioner Jordan has made to move forward with placing on the ballot, um, the bond issue to replace on a Central Middle School, and the tax implications to be determined after the decision is taken.
I'm trying to, uh, second to that motion.
Okay, our motion's been made and it's second. Are you seeing additional discussion?
I'm, I'm gonna vote it in the pot, to move along with this resolution too. But I just want you to get, as you mentioned a while ago, get used to it, with just four more schools kinda right behind us.
Um, well, I was gonna wait and get it cleared, I don't have anybody, um, to leave, so I'll go ahead and, and make a comment now. We have met with the school board four times, at least four times. We have toured Central Middle School. We have brought in a roofing company, a major roofing company, who gave us a major proposal to show us what they can do to put a new roof on the building. Um, the condition of Central Middle School goes way farther than a roof. It is in really bad shape. And I believe that no, um, I don't believe it falls on our maintenance crew out there or anything. It's old school. Um, I have been and looked at a school, um, on an individual basis, but was taken on a tour by the principal and the, um, and the maintenance guy, about an hour and a half tour of a school that was built, um, say, about six years ago. But this is something, you know, this is one of those things you can't do like this, and it doesn't exist. It exists. And we have debated about it at length among ourselves, with the, the Board of Education. We have asked a, a million questions. They've asked a lot of questions of us. The referendum is for everybody to have an opportunity to express their voice in a vote. The school's still in bad condition, regardless of what the vote is, so the public needs to understand that. But it is your opportunity to, to capture your ballot and your vote on that. Uh, we, we just have, we find ourselves in a difficult situation. And to echo what Commissioner Felton said, it's not the only school that needs attention. They won't go away either. So, you know, we've, uh, we've asked some things of the Board of Education to provide us with, and they've, they've come forward and helped us in that. And, uh, we, we're trying to remember all the, we've all the, um, things, I think of. We've asked them that if this does go forward, to have some, um, town hall meetings and not to have all of them in Gazeville, but to have them in other areas of the county. Maybe at the fire departments, things like that. So to make it easier for the public to come and hear how bad things are, okay? So full openness, full transparency. Give everybody the opportunity to step up to that podium two or three times all over the county to be heard, and not to be heard after the fact, before the ballot, and before the vote, before the building starts and takes place, okay? So we're hoping there's gonna be plenty of time for input. The ballot is just one opportunity. And, Board Chairman, I apologize for being so long, but I didn't want everybody to leave. And let's be making notes just to the county. So thank you for my time.
Um, are we prepared to vote? I guess we need to show hands on this one, okay? All those in favor of putting, uh, a referendum, a resolution, um, for a referendum for the November election, um, to, for the replacement of Central Middle School on the ballot? All those in favor, say, I, I mean, raise your hand. All those opposed? And county manager, you need to come up with information for us, and give us that information from the Board as well. Okay, that finishes up my whole business. We begin a stretch break.
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll stretch for five minutes. Moving on to new business, our last item is the Board of Elections budget discussion. Uh, county manager?
You have the foreword and information. We get the request for budget and amendments for the Department of Sales. And I have not received that date, but I do know that the Board of Elections is here. So I will, if it's okay, I would like to have a stay.
Mr. Parkinson, are you one of these folks?
Uh, well, Miss Gordon, just take your hand. You let her, mister?
She, uh, is in kind of distress with her voice.
She's got her hand on, on the, on the, so tight.
Come up here so you don't have to stress any of this.
You can stay in my ear.
Don't move your child. Can we move a child?
I can read the play.
Well, one of the, if you could, the park kind of funds, um, the one, remove some of the funds from contract and services that are going, now about twenty-three or four, um, which does not quite come to the, the nine thousand, but it's needed to fulfill the park fund. Which is, um, needed in order for the office to have coverage during all hours of the business, which is my, that's been the requirement, including that office, that's been in all kinds of, you know, um, some complaints in the past, before I was on the board, when people came to the office and no one was there. The directory has a job of going out to the community, like this past election, to go and promote and talk about the voter ID thing that came up this year, was the first election, which was something new. And, uh, that's mandated by the state for elections. Many hours of the board out, and they did with different people and discussing this thing. I think this by the way is mandated by the state, a minimum of the maximum.
Which I have not, I have not, it's already exhausted. Unexpected outreach practice.
Do they, do they, uh, do they have civic groups or?
Civic groups. We went to most civic groups in churches to do the, um, trainings, does include the churches as well, training, picture log and state log.
Training our employees.
Training. There was also training employees as well, which has been a whole line item.
When the budget is handed in, when your budget is handed in, when you came up with the nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, how did you determine that date?
The previous board chose, so you see that's from a number of hours, because I believe the county manager and finance officer told him the number of hours that are hard time to create employees to give, and they used the maximum, the best standard employees to receive the rest.
Received guidance and price. I just didn't hear you.
Can we, you know, problem if we could, we're allowing many departments in this county village, just only have one full-time person. So I'd like the county manager, she, she has, I may ask that we may come to office. I mean, I might even come to office a long time.
So you're saying that you want to move money from contract services, what did you say?
Unemployment.
Uh-huh, unemployment. Well, unemployment is just a hundred and ten dollars.
Right, and that money, right, that money will not be used, we've already paid out
all of unemployment for all departments, so that money will not be used between now and then.
Okay, so that money can be used and contract services, you used about ninety-seven hundred twelve thousand, so you have, um, two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars sixty-nine cent, you want to use some of that money.
Correct.
So that gives you about twenty-three eighty-four.
That's correct.
And will that see you to the end of the budget here?
No, we, we have a election coming up.
No, we understand, that's a separate, we understand.
No, that still needs to be covered, that still needs to be covered.
No, but did we say that?
No, not for part-time. That, if there was an additional election, we said we would cover if there were extra things that were needed and other ones, but that did not per time to the part-time and temporarys. I don't.
We have a break down. Natalie, does that? The total amount we budgeted for, for elections, is that easily a handmaid fund?
That's what this is.
Okay, total amount, okay. Is there, um, does the Board of Elections have a fund?
No, what is this, what about the campaign?
Okay, so no pile of money anything?
Nothing.
Okay, so the first thing we need is a budget amendment to move money from unemployment and contract and services into the part-time. We need a, uh, we get the budget amendments on account from different departments, you know, where you're going to take the money from, cover that shortfall. So that's the first thing we need. And then we can act on that.
The board approved, I know, the board approved the reasons that people got. Natalie, what percentage of this, this new need is, and what did, what did they?
They were put on it, they were, they, everything was seen one percent, it's like everyone else, and I don't think I can access what I need in here. But it was on the pay scale, and they were, they were never put on a pay scale, and we had to put them on one. And I'm not sure I have.
I'm curious what part of that played into the shortfall.
I don't think it was a whole lot of difference in their, in their, I mean.
Well, this is a shortfall coming up because of, uh, June election.
Now, this is a shortfall practically.
Probably.
We haven't gotten to that. There's two separate issues. One is a shortfall that exists at present time, and that there will be a known with the June election, which was up, I mean, that's not, drop that, we can't control that, that's what the state is telling us.
And I remember that the pay was during the commissioner, it came to the commissioners.
Well, say, no, it was put in on scale.
Right, it was put in on scale.
So we have a, we have a issue and we have a solution to the issue. What do you, right, move this, this?
Well, it's too late.
Because see, this money, she's already gone over with the last pay period.
Thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, eight, seven, is what they overspent.
Yeah.
On the budget.
No, this was one that was just ready today for, when I was working on the budget, I made a copy, no, as of, um, the one that she has, which is in the February, it's one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars sixty-two cent, that was planned, but when Christie ran payroll, it shows at one thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents.
John, I, I would say that, way I make a motion to, uh, approve an amendment to the budget to cover the, uh, overspend for month of March.
But, you know, we, they, they all need to, to have sent that in, you know, so that we can do that, I mean, like we generally do for everybody else, that we get a, a minimum sheet, that's, we don't have one in this package, it was a package, used to be, uh, departmental request for budget action, and, um, fill it out, sign it, and send it to us, that, so we can take care of the problems that has.
So motion, I'll make a motion that, uh, the, that the board would approve, uh, the overspent budget item to cover the cost of part-time workers through March out of, uh, twenty-sixteen.
Specifically giving that dollar amount?
If that's pretty accurate, yes, if that's it, is that, is that accurate, I mean, one thousand three forty?
Yes.
Okay, one thousand fourteen, one thousand three hundred and forty dollars eighty-two cents.
Well, no, that is not what is needed, that's not, that's how much pay up the difference, it's one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cent.
So that's essentially gonna move my numbers.
It's got that much, but it's been this much.
Okay, so that's a difference, right, the difference of that, yeah, that would be the motion.
Okay, for the budget, that's the motion for this budget amendment?
Yes, for month of March, to cover the difference between what was overspent and what's currently, uh, unencumbered in line.
Do I hear a second?
Sir.
My motion's made, second, uh, we, we, I, I do with the voice, you know.
Just if I have it correctly, are we making a motion to approve a budget amendment or to direct them to create a budget amendment?
Well, we need to have the pay work.
We don't have the force to, for, uh, we don't have any budget, no force to.
And I, I don't think the, you know, the officers kind of want to have those rules.
Maybe just let this motion rest for a while until we get a budget, and then I'll hang. But it's, it's a quest, and I'll hang.
Do you want to?
Let's think about it, it's got a couple of checks, uh, at the end of the month, I mean, it's six. Well, let me phrase it this way, I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment that will be submitted by the Board of Elections, uh, in the amount to cover the difference of what's currently appropriated and what's currently been overspent, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven dollars. All right, motion is, is to approve the budget.
Well, if you don't submit a budget amendment.
Right, if you don't submit a budget amendment, then we, we won't do it, right, exactly, we've got to have, we've got to have a amendment, that's, that's proper, we're watching this.
Do you want two separate amendments?
If it's to be two, yeah, we got to be at the shortfall, we got to get back, and, you know, and we need that, we shouldn't have that tonight.
We weren't up there than that, I just knew we were in a zero balance, we didn't know that was a shortfall. They were told we had to come in person, let you guys know.
Well, you had, since we didn't have a budget amendment, you had to, um, do this, um, but.
Otherwise, we would have time to approve that pay period, yeah, boy.
This, this for one hundred and eighty-six, is that, now we're moving.
No, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars twenty cents, outside the.
That's, that could be done, and we have to come back.
No, you know, he did, or they haven't, I guess.
We have a budget, a budget is prepared.
Approved, budget is, forthcoming.
Forecoming, uh, budget, yeah, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
You say, Mr. President, Madam Chairman?
Yes, so, so, okay, so the motion before us is upon receiving a budget amendment of, to pay the shortfall of one hundred and eighty-seven dollars twenty cents, so that these people can be paid at this point. Okay, any questions? All those in favor, say a, uh, opposed. Okay, the next item.
And then they have additional requests. Well, for the additional part-time salaries.
June, it's something, it's a new birthday.
We're looking at additional, we're going to cover through, through the end of June, the rest of the year, which is about nine thousand dollars, um, and that's where we're looking to also take away from that contract and services to cover some of that, that the paid part-time workers, is that correct?
Yes.
We, uh, we had this discussion, we just did what we did as an exception, not to set precedence, right, okay, because we have other departments that, um, very big hills in the back. We don't, I know they have this need and this legitimate, because there's a general motion, but we need, that money's not gonna be spent in March, then we need, uh, we need a, uh, button submitted on that before we need a vote, because if we make an exception, we made two exceptions, the same department, two nights, and I think we will be, uh, addressing our other departments, um, with integrity, so, uh, not that they need to appear before us, again, it's just, just a budget.
Right, then you need to include the justification, what you do with the budget, the number of hours you anticipate them working, and Melissa, when was it you wanted stuff for the April sixth meeting? Is it Thursday?
So maybe submit a budget request.
Would it help if she could add that to you this evening or just walk?
I would say during her, her, and finance officer's hours, okay.
Well, we have an April sixth, we have.
No, she, I meant Thursday.
Thursday.
To put it on packet, um, that is for the June, that, or, you know, the federal board, the common money, um, the one, see, we made an exception for the nine, for so that they could get paid for the shortage that already exists.
So the justification is, is just a matter of saying, there's a general motion?
No, it would need to probably the same as all, as all other departments, how you need it and how many hours you anticipate them working, that way we'll know how many, how much money, just like the expense.
Okay. Are we all clear about what we need?
So all amendments, because all the nation would understand.
Okay, you have a good amendment, I mean, we've already approved a shortfall that already exists, but we still need that amendment, and we're making an exception to do that.
And that's the question I need to ask about the exception, I know you're making an exception, but in times past, I know there were amendments that could be passed, you can find us a partner, without coming for the commission.
This isn't one because of lose money, it's dollars.
And, uh, all of this, the June election, you need to have, um, how much money, you know, how much, how many hours, part-time, working, you know, so, we, I'm saying that the June election's been thrown off, but we need to have it still, like, where the money's going.
We need to hold those, and then there's one paper, because if we don't get the first one, then the part-time will not be paid, and the second one, it has to be on the, two weeks prior to, so it can tell me April, January.
You have a second one, that I don't consider.
The second one is so important.
We didn't budget for this, we should have said.
But then you have to sum and ask, well, for part-time people, if you need additional money to come from phone ballots or from somewhere, then you need to justify why you need that, how many hours, that sort of thing, and then the commissioners decide if that's funded or not.
And you do have a little.
Yeah, and you do have a little in that contract and services, because you have
two thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixty-nine cent that is unencumbered at present time, so, um, you could use part of that to pu- pu- color, sell it for part-time, but you need to look at your elections, but then, I know you want the additional funds, then you're going to have to have additional, and I believe when we passed the budget last year, we said that the elections, if there was a, a non-election thrown in, because there was some debate about how the elections were going, that we would come back and consider, and consider, so, that's why. So, you know, you can cover some of it with your current vote, and then what you can't cover, you need to ask, make a request to us for additional funds. Is that clear?
As far as the election expenses, do you need something submitted for that?
Election expenses.
For the election, you have, are we balanced, there'll be?
Yes, we should obviously then worship for the ballots for this, we have, then yes, all of that will also be needed at the April fourth, I mean, April fourth, for the April sixth meeting.
The state hasn't come back, but considering this, like a primary, I've got a runoff, so they have a back, said how they want, if they're gonna cut it down or whatever, so, right now we're looking at what we just spent for this last one.
The state can get that, you know, too.
Slow down, so.
Okay.
We got those two pieces of paper, we got it.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll go over to, uh, foremost, to the college, um, of our home board trustees, um, this, this thing, to us, I have not had any communication from C O, C O A regarding
I had not had any communication from the COA regarding this position. This came directly from the grand line.
You sent that out?
This is what he said.
Okay. Will Bill?
Yes, and it was not to Melissa. It was to another employee. So, if you would like, I can follow up with the COA and, and I did not receive it on the first. But I can follow up with the COA and see if this position is up for reappointment and let you know after April the sixth.
Captain, we need to get something from them.
Well, he was appointed two thousand eight, apparently he was reappointed in two thousand twelve.
And sometimes it's a limit, the terms you can serve.
That could be. We're going to need to find out how, how soon we give this one back. We always had legal requirements to reappoint him.
I'll follow up, and bring that back to the Congress. Okay, we'll just table that at this time. Okay, next item, surplus request, A two. Twenty oh two, board F three hundred and fifty. Green with an amount of one guys, I mean, one hundred and seventy-three guys and one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, sorry. In wait. This comes from the building bribes, okay? And they won't put it on, on GTO. And the reserve is eighteen hundred.
I'm going to approve it.
Okay, motion's been made to approve, I'm here a second.
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so, those of you who don't want, we did it, or definitely did it.
This has been replaced with a new vehicle.
Okay, so that has been approved. Next item in the business is Personnel Board recommendation. At last Personnel Board, Department of Social Services asked for a salary rate and staff change for one of their employees. The Personnel Board did not agree to it. And so it comes before you.
Lieutenant Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I did a little checking and the employee was originally at a grade twenty-three, step nine. And they were promoted to supervisor, they went to a grade twenty-seven, step one. And that occurred in December fourteen, two thousand fourteen. And there's not been an increase since that time. Normally, when you start at step one, that is usually a grade that you're starting. It's not a working level grade, two and above, normally it's, it's, it's a working level. And since she's come into this supervisor position and have not had a step increase since then, I think it, it would, it would be in line with what we are looking to do in our step increases that County Manager's working on, that she would go to a step two after having been in this position since December two thousand fourteen. It's been a year. So...
In fact, that's not what I was requested to look into. I was requested to look into merit based on your evaluation. And in this request, if you'll note, there is not even a request of how much of staff change that this employee, that the director was asking for the employee.
And I agree with that. I'm just saying that for the sake of how we build our county employees as a step one, if the supervisors are paying employees to hire them in as a step one and not to advance to a step two within a twelve-month period of time, it's, it's not consistent with industry standards. Nor, I think, it's, it's not consistent with what we're doing with the county. So, I don't disagree with what was asked for. I'm just saying that, that we may want to consider, given our step, the step two would be from a working level to been in that position since two thousand fourteen, December two thousand fourteen. But I don't agree with reclassifying her to a different step. I'm not saying that, I'm saying that a step from step one to step two would be in line with recognizing that she has been in that position and she needs to be at a working level.
On my name, and I think this passes, I will make you aware that there will probably be at least ten, if not more, requests at the personnel board meeting for this same treatment.
So, we got, we had employees as step one?
Yes, sir.
About four a year?
Yes, sir.
People go to personnel board, my name, I happen to be one of the members of that. This, as other things that have been considered by Personnel Board, we're given a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of discussions. And we came up with what we thought was the very best recommendation. If all of the Personnel Board recommendations are going to be turned down, then why do we need a Personnel Board?
Well...
I will pause, I will study, and I will build, and it is not being accepted as being required. And there's been a lot, we, we don't need to sit in there and have an hour discussion on this because we have already done, three, the three that own the Personnel Board have already had an hour discussion and, and came up with this recommendation.
Well, that's, that's the purpose of, of government, is to divide different opinions. It's not that, that, that opinion is wrong. Many of the things that, that Personnel Board comes up, they're never questioned. They're never addressed, it's just going to be approved. I mean, this is just one that a different thought has been brought up, and I think it needs to be considered. It's up to the board, but they're, they're completely ignored. So, now, this is government. This is a, a matter of, of, of an opinion that should be considered.
Well, I believe, Mr. Jordan, you said that she was, went from a grade twenty-three to a grade twenty-seven. But that's four, that's a nice jump.
I don't disagree with that.
I mean, that's a huge jump at one, at one time.
Was that called a reset?
No, because the job was a different grade.
She was recognized when she got a promotion and moved up on the schedule.
And that'd be December fourteen, something like that.
Normally, you don't say a grade one for over a year.
I know there's two employees sitting in this room that's been at grade one, I mean, step one, more than a year.
And that's one reason we were asked to also want a plan to kind of move our employees in that. Because a certain level employee, you come in as a step one, generally after six months, you evaluate if you're working at a level, you go to step two. And thereafter, you may be considered every two or three years. But for an employee to come in as a step one on a job, first of all, you can learn that job, you may have a lot of experience. But to become efficient and effective at that job after about six months, you become effective and efficient. And that recognizes that. And that's where you go to step two. You better work at that. Someone else cannot come into a job that the current employee is doing at a step one, or step two, and just start doing everything that they did. So, this is, this is industry standards, it's, it's a human relations issue. And I think it needs to be addressed. And I think you're working on that now.
I think that's, excuse me for interrupting. I think that's one of the things we considered, because we were working on it. Instead of doing it piecemeal, we would do it all at one time or every step. And not do it healthy, skeletal. And also, June, you know, the end of the budget year is June.
Well, and there again, putting this out there, it's, the board has to go on it. And...
How about, um, how about evaluation? They do their own evaluations out there, correct?
They'll have to sign them to me, and they'll just sign off that you're waiting for us that we receive them.
Okay. The evaluation for this particular employee, is, is still on their, you know?
No, we moved them all to the beginning of the year so that if there are increases, makes it simple for payroll, this person is just now having their one-year evaluation from the entire December, through December fifteen. Okay.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Jordan. And the personnel committee does spend, they spend collaborative time together. I hear what you're saying.
They spend, yeah.
And...
I've spent a number of years on that.
Yeah, yeah, I hope you know.
I will.
And...
There, there again, you know, it's, it's, it's brought to the board, and you know, this is something, that's my feelings about it as a board. But not the board wants to go on with that, so, I mean, I'm not, you know...
Do you have a motion?
No, there's no motion, you just need to vote on the recommendation.
Oh, yeah, vote on the recommendation, that's right, we don't need a motion for that. Okay, so, are we prepared to vote? Now, the recommendation of Personnel Board is not to honor the request for a staff adjustment at this time, at this time. All those in favor of that recommendation, say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
I agree.
The lead care is four to one. And I like to say, we will hope that we do it all at one time and as we get the pay scale and all work done, so that we're not doing it piecemeal, piecemeal.
I think that's a good resolution. But it shows also the, the need for it, and we will to, to get that policy out. We have to work on it.
And it's also, you can budget for it with the new budget, which you've got to have a limit somewhere.
Especially with other situations, they exist, go with the same standard.
We got two people, well, they're shaking their head. Okay, a budget amendment. And this comes from the community center. We got a budget to return the grant funds from the community center back from Southern Extension.
Right, Renee Nicholson worked for extension. Part of her job included coordinating the SHIP program, which is the senior health insurance. And she now works for the community center extension, then is no longer going to be the grant recipient. So, they are returning the funds to the state. And then the money will come to the community center.
Okay, did I hear our motion to approve this budget amendment?
So, move it.
Got motions for amendment, did I hear a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that ends the new business. No, we have one more, pricing community grant application. Right, yes.
There's a, it is a separate email. And the figure puts up early, like, you know, other office is certainly behind the agenda. And it is a request from the Gates County Housing Committee for the commissioner to pre-submission an application for administration by the Gates County, at Gates County Housing Committee. The award amount available is one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the first paragraph explains the long time limit, and also this, who may qualify for the program.
Okay, must be elderly, disabled, or a veteran. Or children six years old or under fled, passed eighty percent of median income. And have, have a, the maximum payers, twenty-five thousand per home. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll move to, move to submit this request for approval to submit the application for higher required grade.
Okay, and I think Ray just had to do that, so, motion's made, it's second, any discussion? Okay, certainly, we, okay. With hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, citizens' comments? Mrs. Rutter, we have...
I guess I'm not... Well, that's...
Tell us, and then, and where are you at?
She's a Sunday.
Yeah, that's a Sunday.
Yeah.
I call her, so...
Valerie, fifty-eight, actually, well, Sunday, I'll tell her. It's funny, this is my first time attending a night session, I've been here today session. I thoroughly enjoy it. I think there's some comments earlier, talking about the water department. This is very, so, since the private cake of water bill may double up, do two months at a time. Because those small businesses come around, kids, everybody has matching things going on in their life that they may forget. But if you take that twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars and just double it and pay two bills or three bills, you won't have to worry about it. That's just my opinion, citizens' opinion.
Okay, thank you.
But I enjoy the view.
Come on, I, I, we'll take a show on the road. Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner's comments? And Leo, Brad, if you want to make any comments?
I'll, I'll pass.
Like, I hate to talk.
Glad, uh, glad any people didn't, they're, they're possible to get.
What if you technically?
You pass.
I appreciate all the tenants who've had delight and all the customers, too. And the problem, well, I call it a problem, the discussion about the water collection is a, a concern for a lot of people. We all hear about it in a lot of different ways. But I, I remember, and I remember refreshing somebody else's memory of it when we had this discussion probably a year ago. Cal Brown sits out there in front of me, and after the discussion was over, he said, well, why don't they just pay the fee? Sometimes it's not quite that easy. Anyway, I thank y'all for coming.
I too thank everyone for coming, and I thank my, my constituents for being here. Eddie was Sunday. And we do appreciate the interest of the county citizens because these are decisions that affect everyone. And we do ask that citizens of the county be mindful that we do plan to have a referendum, a little new school, and to give consideration so that they can make the best choice that we need to make in order to afford that. So, we have a way to...
Democracy at work, that's what we saw here tonight. People come to the podium and said what they had to say, stated their concerns. And we appreciate that, that's why we're here. And I stole this topic, democracy at work, last session, can't use that tonight.
That's right.
Thank everyone for coming.
I also like that everyone's coming. And yes, we do see that we do have differences of opinion, but I think that's the strength of the board, instead of a whip... but I think that's a strength of the board, instead of a weakness. If everybody was a block step, we wouldn't have a very good outcome. But when we can question each other and, uh, look at different viewpoints, I think the end, end product is much better. Uh, I know I'm playing Valerie, since she's on the eastern side of the county. I appreciate that, uh, for you, uh, and the Euro people left earlier.
They were in red, I don't know.
As you can see, we have a lot of issues before us. It is budget time, we have emergency management, we have schools, we have some really hard, hard work to do. And some very, I think, going to be some long hours, you know, that, few months. Uh, trying to do the best for our citizens, and that's why we're all here, to try and do the best for our citizens. But you can only spend a dollar once, and, um, that's tough. So thank you for coming. Okay, as, now we need a motion to end a closed session, pursuant to North Carolina general statute, one for three dash three eighteen, eleven, at this economic development, real estate, and personnel. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, Valerie, have a safe trip. Okay, did I hear a motion to come out of the closed session?
So moved.
Motion's been made, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, so, did I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. A motion's been made, in seconds, to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.